So it's connected to, um, signal com video. I'm assuming that's the one you were using. Com video? So it doesn't look like I can get on.
So whether or not the one is before.
Zombies. You got a zombie?
Which is before us. I couldn't even tell you.
So it's gonna be.
All a hoax. Good morning. Like to welcome everyone to the commission meeting, Weber County. Today's date is Tuesday, 4th day of February, and it is 10:01. Appreciate you being in attendance. We're going to actually go off script a little bit, and Commissioner Jenkins will give the invocation, and then pledge of allegiance will be given by Stacy Skeen, and I will give the thought of a day. So we'll go to that point. Commissioner Jenkins?
Thank you, Commissioner Forre. Our heavenly fathers, we come before you this day at our commission meeting. We give you thanks, Lord, for the opportunity we have of being here, for the wonderful things that happen in our lives because of our participation in county government, and all the wonderful people we have to deal with. We pray, Lord, that thou watch over and bless us, that our minds will be properly set, that the things we say and do here this day will be in accordance with not only thy holy mind will, but with the desires of the public, that we can govern in righteousness, and that we can make sure that the things that we do will help the people of this county be prosperous and be able to live the lives they care to. We're grateful, Lord, for all that thou has given us. We pray that thou be with us this day, and we do it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Let allegiance to the flag out in the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So my thought today goes back to a phrase that somebody mentioned to me years ago, and that is, goes as follows. The reward of a task well done is being asked to do a bigger task. And the reason for that is that this past week, we've had some number of storms. I know that was fairly stormy down here. We didn't have the amount of snow that some folks had in the upper, that in the lower valley that we had, that they had down here, that we didn't have that in the upper valley. But there was an article in the paper regarding snowplow drivers, and the stress, and the hours, and the work that they go through to perform their duties. And it got me thinking about our road crews that do an excellent job in maintaining our roads during these storms throughout Weber County, not just Ogden Valley area, but down here as well. And, you know, really, their job is stressful. It comes at a time when they have no control over their hours, and that the public depends on these people to go out so they can go to work, they can go do their leisure, they can go about their daily duties. And I'm not sure that they receive enough thanks for a job well done. And we turn around and ask them to do it the next day, maybe for even a larger storm. So I don't see Joe Hadley here, but I hope that we would communicate back to Joe that he needs to recognize those snowplower drivers for what they do. I actually had a comment from an Ogden Valley resident a couple weeks ago that said her roads in her subdivision are in the best shape in terms of snow removal that she's seen since she's been up there in the last 20 years. So they're doing a great job. If you'll pass that on. That's my thought, commissioners. Give thought, give some thanks to the hard worker, hard workers in the road department. Okay, public comments. We have anybody that would like to come and speak on any issue that is not on the agenda today? They're welcome to do so. Okay, nobody's rushing the mics. We're gonna move on. Thank you. Let's go to consent items. I'm gonna go through these. Number one, consent for approval of warrants 2399 through 2411, and 447039 through 447167, the amount of $667,557.96. Number two, request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $1,544,998.3. Number three, request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on January 28th, 2020. Four, request for approval of new beer licenses. Five, request for approval of new business licenses. Six, requests for the, from the Weber County's Sheriff's Office for approval to surplus office equipment. Seven, request from Weber County Human Resources for approval to surplus office equipment. Eight, request from the Weber Morgan Health Department for approval to surplus a 2000 Nissan Xterra, a 2004 Jeep Grand Cherokee, and a 2007 Subaru Impreza WRX. Number nine, request from the Weber County Operations Department for approval to surplus Magic Chef mini fridge. Ten, request from Weber County Human Resources for approval of ADP termination acknowledgement letter. Eleven, request for approval to ratify contract by and between Weber County and West Haven City for the Volunteers in Public Service Program. Twelve, request for approval of 12th Street change order, number one, Starkstaker Parsons. I believe that's our consent item agenda. Commissioners, changes, corrections, comments?
Motion to approve consent.
Let's see, let's, maybe we have Lynn go through those first, and then.
Thank you, Commissioner. We had 66 purchase orders. That's the one totaling a little over 1.5 million. Largest of these, 58% or 900,000, were replacing fleet vehicles. 24%, 377,000 of the library for books, materials, and media services, and 5% or 81,000 of the jail for boiler replacement. We had 142 checks totaling almost 668,000. The largest of these, 46% or 308,000, was an escrow dispersment for overlook in Halcyon Lake, and then 10% or 65,000 for elections, printing, and postage for the presidential primary. All others were under 10%.
Thank you. Now, are there any questions, comments?
I do have a question. Did you say boiler replacement at the jail?
That is what I have on my list.
Yeah, I. Did we go over that this morning? I didn't, don't remember that one. Sean?
We did not talk about it this morning, but yes, last week, we had a boiler go out at the jail, and we did have to replace that. So it's in the process. It should be up and running today or tomorrow.
Okay. I thought we talked about that at one of our work meetings.
We did. We knew it was going out, but it finally did, and then we had to replace it. Yeah, so we have discussed those things that need to take place, but Bryce was on top of that. They, they got it ordered and got it in, and it's, it was started last week, and will, should be finished today or tomorrow.
Okay, additional questions? Commissioner Jenkins, I believe, made the motion? I did. And Commissioner Harvey seconded. I'm gonna call for the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Let's move on to our action items. G1, request for approval of a subscription service agreement by and between Weber County and Sapphire LLC providing Weber County access to and usage of a cloud-based software service, providing ticketing software for Perry's Egyptian Theater and the Golden Spike Event Center. Marty Smith?
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Several months ago, we decided we wanted to look at our ticketing service. It had been a while since we had done that. Thought it was prudent to reevaluate our service provider. So we wrote an RFP, put that out requesting proposals for theater, for theater and box office at our Golden Spike as well, ticketing services. So we received seven respondents. We put together an evaluation committee of probably 12 to 15 people. We had our box office staff, general managers from those two venues, our event managers, purchasing, IT evaluated those proposals, narrowed it to three finalists, requested those three finalists come to town and do presentations in person, again, put the committee together to evaluate them, and arrived at a finalist, which is Sapphire. Hopefully, this, our current ticketing provider did not provide a proposal, so we were forced to go with a new company, which will be good because we're looking to modernize our systems and reduce our lines at will call, get away from a hard ticket, move to mobile tickets for our customers, try to make it easier for them, more efficient, quicker, reduce our labor costs in our box offices. So those are the reasons. Just looking for approval of this today.
Questions, commissioners?
Boldly, moving into the present.
We like them. So Marty, just a question. So will this system give a customer the ability to go online, get a ticket, and then download that so they can come with their iPhone?
Exactly.
To the venue?
Yeah, several options. They'll be able to, if they want, still come to the box office, but hopefully, most will download that to their phone, bring it in. We'll have scanners at the door. We'll have immediate drop counts. We'll know exactly how many people in real time are sitting in our seats. It should be really great. You know, when we do 50,000 people at the fair, we'll know exactly how many are in the gate at any given time, so.
Well, I've got to admit, Commissioner, that kind of comes from the old school. I always liked having that hard ticket, because when I put it on my phone, I don't know if I'm gonna find it again, so.
Well, you can still get one if you want one.
Okay, yeah, well, I'm, I'm coming around. All right, commissioners?
It's a great, great move for our facilities, and it also helps pair them all up with the, your permission, commissioners. I'd like to make the recommendation that Weber County contract with the Sapphire Group LLC for our ticketing services.
Thank you for that.
Second.
And we have a second, Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda item two, under G, request for approval of a cooperative agreement by and between Weber County and Utah State University, DBA-USU Extension Services, improving the quality of life for people in the county, enhancing economic opportunities within the county, and sustaining the natural resources of the county. In a program, that sounds like a big one.
Yes, it does. And they do a great job at, at it.
They do.
Yeah, this is an agreement that we have entered into the last several years, as we have moved away from having a combination at the USU Extension. We used to have a combination of some university employees and some county employees, and it started to cause problems with differing HR policies and, and things like that. So we kind of have taken the, taken a different, taken a different stance here, and gone to just where we pay them one flat contract price, as well as provide a few value and kind services, like the building and such. And so this is just an agreement to move forward with that, renewing that agreement.
Just one moment. Sorry, Jennifer, go ahead.
No, you're fine. So I'm just looking for approval of that contract to renew this agreement, and I, next year, I'm probably going to come and ask that we look at maybe a three-year agreement, just so that we don't have to do this every December or January.
This has been renewed every year, is my understanding?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, we know USU Extension does a great job, so. Questions, commissioners?
No, great. We appreciate their service and the, what they provide for us out there, not just for the adults, but the youth of Weber County. And it's been a great service for a number of years, and we appreciate USU extending here. And so commissioners, again, sorry to, unless you have something? The only thing I want to say is last year, we took a good look at that contract to see if we felt like we were getting our money's worth out of it. And it's a, it's a tough contract to know if you get your money worth out of it. But Naomi's working hard out there, and I, I, at the time, felt no reason not to renew it, and I feel the same way today.
Okay, is that a second?
Yeah, that's a second.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, and I would agree that if you take a look at the resources that are available to us as a county, you know, we have one of their top people out there now serving with the Weber County Weed Board, and he brings a, you know, resource of knowledge that'd be hard to replace, so. And Naomi and these others bring vast resources to us that we can take advantage of.
Yeah, the university has a lot of funding going toward it that our residents are able to benefit from.
Yep, thank you. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Jennifer, motion carries. Let's move now to agenda G, agenda item G3, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Cody Nebiker to establish a disc golf concessionary, concessionaire for Fort Bonaventura. Mr. Ferrariol, that's your neck of the woods.
That is my neck of the woods. Good morning, gentlemen. As you know, we have a small building over at Fort Bonaventura that has been in place for years and years and never used. It was moved over as a Browning house, an original building, redone once it was there, and it has been stagnant ever since. So what we would like to do is go in, and we've already started rehabbing the exterior, keeping everything original, but using that as a concessionaire's location for disc golf. Similar to what we do in the fort with Sue Barker for period correct items. This would offer discs, bags, shirts for disc golfers. They'll also have rental equipment for people that want to come and use the course. Also, it gives us a way to stream merchandise for tournaments and have them purchase that merchandise through that pro shop, and then we get a percentage of the sales off of that. Pretty straightforward.
Great. Questions?
Thank you, Todd, for seeing a little ahead of the future there. I remember when that Browning cabin was moved down there. It's the, one of the first original residences of Weber County. Well, one of the first original residents of the area before we were even Weber County. It's very, very old, so glad to have you.
And it's a neat building, but for us to furnish it appropriately would probably be $20,000, $25,000 to do it right. So without that funding, we looked at a revenue stream. The disc golf has become extremely popular. So especially with Worlds coming up, it gives us a home base for some merchandise as well.
Thank you. Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair, motion to approve contract by and between Weber County and Cody Nebiker for a disc golf, disc golf concession at Fort Bonaventura.
Thank you. Have a motion by Commissioner Harvey?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Number four, request for approval of contract by and between Weber County and the Broken Heart Rodeo Company to hold the Intermountain Icebreaker High School Invitational Rodeo at the Golden Spike Event Center. Mr. Duncan Olson?
Good morning, commissioners. I'm the closing act for the Culture Parks and Rec Department. This contract is for our icebreaker rodeo. Nine years ago, we started a high school rodeo that, that turned out to be kind of like the, the season kickoff for the spring. Commissioner Harvey and Amy King did a great job of, of getting it off the ground, and now it's grown into being one of the best rodeos, high school-wise, in the region. We added junior high last year, and our economic impact numbers are creeping towards half a million dollars. So a super awesome high school rodeo. We've got $53,000 worth of added money this year between prizes and actual prize money, and we're really excited for this year's event.
Questions, commissioners?
It's great. It's a great, one of the largest high school rodeos in the state, commissioners, and it's ours. We produce it. It's wonderful. We're supporting the youth like this and that stuff.
Is this a statewide event?
We get kids from all over. We have some competitors this year from Iowa, which we haven't had, Alaska, Canada, Montana, Wyoming, everywhere in between.
Wow, so all over.
Yeah. It's, it's one of the best in the region. People have, Idaho and Nevada have actually changed their high school rodeo schedules so that their kids can come and compete at this rodeo.
That's great. Okay. Comments, questions, action?
I'd make a motion that we approve this contract between Broken Heart Rodeo Company and the Golden Spike Event Center.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Jenkins, second by Commissioner Harvey to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Duncan. Let's move now to item five, request for approval of an interlocal agreement by and between Weber County and West Haven City for the distribution of beer tax funds. Charlotte from the sheriff's office, welcome.
Good morning.
Morning.
How is everybody?
Good. Good.
Good. Yes, so this is just adding another interlocal agreement to the ones that we already have. This is just updating what we already do with West Haven. So if you guys have any questions, this is just to distribute and collect beer tax on behalf of West Haven City.
Questions, commissioners? Ready for a motion?
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve this interlocal agreement between West Haven and Weber County for the distribution of beer fund.
Thank you. Motion by, or motion by Commissioner Jenkins, second by Commissioner Harvey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thanks, Charlotte.
Thank you, commissioners.
You're done. Number six, discussion and action on a proposed to amend, proposal to amend Weber County Code number 104-5, 104-6, 104-7, 104-8, and 104-25 to regulate the cultivation and processing of medical cannabis as required by state code, and to provide related minor edits to clarify intent and consistency. Mr. Ewart, this actually, just as a reminder, we talked about this briefly last week and decided to postpone it and take action today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, we had a public hearing, as required by state law, last week, and the request that came from you guys was to take a good, close look at this and see how it could be amended to fit into the M1 and the M2 zones as well, while also not disrupting the, that area, particularly concerning odors. And so what you'll see in here are a couple of different changes. The item that's in your packet predominantly shows the changes from last week's meeting to this week's meeting, not all of the changes that was previously proposed. So as you look through the red lines, you could see just the shifts that need to be, needed to be made to get this incorporated into the M1 zone. If you look at the A2 and the A3 zone, both of them say all of the use is allowed in the lower zone, so A3 all the use allowed, and A2, A2 all the use is allowed in the, or excuse me, M3, M2, and then all the use is allowed in the M1 zone. So it's progressive that way. And so instead of really tackling this in the M3 zone like we had previously proposed, we're tackling it in the M1 zone instead. What we also did is we got into the standard section, which is the very last paragraph, and added in there, we had in there requirements to mitigate the odor in the agricultural zone, A3 zone. We just added that in, that any zone where cannabis production and cultivation is happening needs to have that odor mitigation. And the last thing that's probably important for us to discuss is as we looked into the M1 zone and the M2 zone, we noticed that residential dwelling units are still allowed in those zones. Our 2003 general plan suggests removing them from those zones. What you have in front of you does do that, removes it from the M1 and M2 zone, if you're comfortable with that. If you're uncomfortable with that, we'll have to make some changes before this is done, but I think those can be really easy administrative changes. One of the changes is that we pulled out residential standards from those zones. We'll just have to plop them back in if you're comfortable with that. Aside from that, everything's pretty much the same from what we talked about last week. Any questions for me?
If not, ready for action?
Make a motion we approve as presented with those changes.
That would be ordinance number three, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
It's a resolution.
Oh, excuse me.
On the audience, Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
And Chair on the floor?
Aye, thank you. Okay, we're gonna excuse Commissioner Harvey. We're gonna still move on, though. And move on to agenda item seven, discussion and action on first approval of the Fenster Farms Phase Two subdivision, an eight-lot subdivision, as well as acceptable, acceptance of road and dedication within this subdivision. Tammy, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. This is a standard subdivision in the A2 zone, consisting of eight lots. The road dedication is approximately 700 linear feet of a 60-foot wide county road. Any questions?
Commissioner Jenkins?
Pretty standard. Nothing special, right?
Right.
I'd make a motion that we approve this lot, this subdivision as presented.
Okay, and I'll second that. I do have a question, though, Tammy. So
Yes.
We had some questions on this in a work session. Did those get resolved, or are we still, is this the same subdivision we talked about in our work session?
This is the same subdivision. Actually, this is Phase Two, so the applicants were referring to a potential Phase Four
Okay.
that hasn't come in yet.
All right. So that's a different phase.
Correct.
I just wanted to, so we're still dealing with that issue, Alan?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Okay. All right, appreciate that.
I believe we're waiting to schedule that meeting. This, just so you're aware, the majority of the improvements have been installed. The applicant has escrowed for the remainder per the county engineer's requirement.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've been requested to switch agenda items eight with nine on your agenda. We're gonna handle actually agenda item nine first, so that will now be called agenda item eight. So we're gonna move to request for approval of memorandum of understanding bind between Weber County and Weber Pathways for the donation and use of county option sales and use tax for highway and public transit, also known as Prop 1 funds. Sean?
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. So Weber Pathways often requests donations from Weber County to construct and maintain trails, and this MOU eliminates the need for a separate agreement with every request that is made. So with, with approval of this MOU, every time Weber Pathways requests funds for maintenance, an MOU will already be in place, and with the request, it will come before you. If you approve that request, then the funds can be donated. So you'll see the next item on your agenda is one of those requests. That is why we ask for the switch. In the 2020 budget, Weber County allocated $200,000 from the Prop 1 fund for pathway maintenance, so this will be the first request that will come out of that budget.
Good. Okay. Commissioner Jenkins, questions?
I do have questions. We made an additional allocation of Prop 1 dollars this year that they hadn't requested.
So you set aside the 200,000, so the first request, which will be the next item on your agenda, will come out of that?
Right. So we, these are the very funds we're talking about.
Correct. That's right. Yep.
Good. Hey.
And Sean, just a- And Sean, just a question. So did the request on an individual basis then not need to come to us?
The, the request will still come to you, but we don't have to provide a separate MOU or a separate agreement with every request.
So we just have a standard kind of boilerplate MOU and then the requests come under that?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
So you'll evaluate each request on its own merit. We did the same thing with impact fees last year. We have an MOU that whenever a request for impact fee donations come in, we already have that MOU in place.
Good, thank you. Seems to make sense. Commissioner Jenkins?
With that, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve item G nine, which is an MOU between Weber County and Weber Pathways.
Thank you. Thank you, I'll second that. In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you, motion carries. Let's go back to the agenda item eight, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Weber Pathways for maintenance of the embankment wall at Pelican Beach at Pineview Loop Pathway.
Thank you. So commissioners, we do have a request for twenty-four thousand dollars to fix the embankment wall at Pelican Beach. This last year, with some of the high water, we had some of the wave action deteriorated that embankment wall which holds up the pathway. So we need to, well, Weber Pathways has already restored the geofabric, placed additional rocks, and compacted the fill material, and they are asking, this is essentially a reimbursement for work that has already been done, but it's twenty-four thousand dollars out of the Prop One Fund.
Okay, out of the Prop, so this has basically come out of the two hundred thousand?
That's correct. So, yeah, this will be the first twenty-four thousand dollars out of that two hundred thousand.
Got it. Mr. Jenkins?
I don't have any issues with that. That's what we put it there for. So I'd make a motion that we approve item G eight, which is a contract between Weber County and Weber Pathways for the maintenance of the Pelican Beach Loop Pathway.
Thank you, and I'm gonna second that. That seems like a good use of the money. That's a very well-used trail up in that part of the country, so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thanks.
Thank you.
Sean, appreciate it. You're in business. Agenda item ten, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and J. Philip Cook LLC for appraisal services for the Weber County building located at twenty-three eighty Washington Boulevard, Ogden, Utah. Ms. Welbanks?
Thank you. This is just a contract to appraise the building that we are standing in right now. You guys have both reviewed the contract. We had some bidders that came in, and this is the company that was selected.
Okay. So this, yeah, we've actually looked at the contract, it's been discussed, it just had to come before us for.
Absolutely.
Commission approval, is that correct?
This actually runs through the HOA, so it will be funded through both Woodbury and the county.
Right, so this is, this is a HOA expense, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
So, Mr. Chair, with that, I'd make a motion that we approve the contract between Weber County and J. Philip Cook LLC for appraisal services on this building.
Thank you, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're in business.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item H, Commissioner comments. Commissioner, you're the last one here with me, so.
That's true, there's two of us. I don't have much to say today.
Comments?
Yeah, it's just been, it's a good time of year. You mentioned it earlier. Boy, right now, it's a little treacherous, winter's here, and we get these tough storms and, you know, with the wind blowing, these wind events for us at the top of Powder Mountain are worse than the snow events. We can handle the snow, but the wind, they've closed that road as fast as you, as you blow it, it's tough. So this is hard. In fact, we've decided that this next year, we're gonna look at, we're gonna look at planting some trees up there and see if we can't put some kind of a natural windbreak in there. Anyway, we're gonna look at it next year, or the, this summer. But with that, it's, the county's doing really good. We had our meeting this morning, and as you said in the meeting, we're just, right now, the county is really doing well.
Yeah, and I, I would agree with that.